Good evening, and welcome to the March 12, 2025 Meeting in the City of Summit, Zoning Board of Adjustment. I am Scott Loikitz, and I am the Chair of the zoning board. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. In accordance with New Jersey statute 10:4-10, adequate notice of a special meeting has been provided to a newspaper record that has been posted here in City Hall. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For the benefit of the public, this meeting is being livestreamed to the city's YouTube page, and also broadcast on Summit's government channels, which are Comcast Channel 34 and Verizon Channel 3. Transcript of this meeting is also being taken using video and audio, so we need all the speakers to utilize one of the microphones in the room. Please note that there are fire exits to my right, your left, and at the back of the room where you entered. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. Anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the DAIS or return it thereafter. Ms. Cotiga, could you call the role of members, please?
Mr. Kirin?
Here.
Mr. Malay is excused. Mr. Nelson?
Here.
Mr. Steiner is excused. Mr. Yuko?
Here.
Ms. Zahn?
Here.
Ms. Chiefo?
Here.
Mr. Feskins is excused. Mr. Chanchuli?
Here.
Mr. Nearing?
Here.
Chairman Loikitz?
Here.
You have a quorum. You may proceed.
Thank you. Andy Ball is the zoning board's attorney. He is not here tonight, but in his place, we have his partner, Zach Stazinski. Yes. Zach will advise the board on matters of law and is the key interface with the applicant's attorney. He does not vote on these applications. Nicole Cotiga is a city employee and is acting as the zoning board's secretary. Our board secretary works with applicants on preparing their applications, planning our agendas, and keeping meeting minutes. The board secretary also does not vote on these applications. Also present are experts who are hired annually by the board to provide input to the board. Tonight, we have Marie Rafé from Colliers Engineering. Also present is Ed Snikus from Burgess Associates, and he is our board planner. These experts are seated at the table to the right of the board, the public's left. They also do not vote on these applications. Our board consists of seven regular members and up to four alternates. All members can participate in the hearings tonight. Only a maximum of seven can vote. Most applications require a simple majority to be approved. Before we enter executive session to vote on the application, you will be advised of how many votes are required. Each case will begin with the applicant's or their attorney giving an overview of the application process to date and the variances that are required. You then hear from any additional expert witnesses the applicant may have to help explain the application and why those variances are needed. The board experts, followed by the board members, may ask questions of the applicant, their attorney, and their experts. Due to recent cases running excessively long, we strongly encourage applicants and their experts to give brief and concise testimony, so we may get to as many cases as possible in a given evening. Once the board members and the board professionals have completed their questioning, the public will have an opportunity to ask questions. It is not a time to tell us what you think about the case. That opportunity comes at the end of the hearing. Please be careful as to how you phrase your questions. They should not be proceeded with a statement about the case, but should be a direct question to the witness. Also, before you ask your questions, please clearly state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address. It's important that our court reporter be able to keep a clear and accurate public record. After all witnesses have been heard, members of the audience have their second opportunity to speak. At that time, you may express your opinion, positive or negative, about the application. Then, the public hearing is closed, and we enter into executive session, where board members discuss the case and then vote. You'll be able to listen to our executive session, but you will not normally be able to participate in our discussion. I will ask that each applicant and/or their attorney, if present, come up and give a brief synopsis of their anticipated testimony tonight, including the number of witnesses, whether or not they can finish their presentation within 30 minutes. All right. I'm going to switch up the order tonight due to the scope and scale of these respective cases. So if we could start out with, and this is just to tell us how many witnesses you have and if you think you can finish in 30 minutes or not. So 28 Londonderry Way, come on up. Hi.
Hi, I'm Dawn Janukowicz.
Hi, Dawn.
I'm the resident, one of five, at 28 Londonderry Way.
Yes. And do you have any witnesses with you tonight?
I do not.
Yes, you do.
Well, my partner in crime, my architect.
All right, perfect. So you have one.
One, yes.
All right. Do you both believe you'll be able to finish your testimony within 30 minutes?
I'm hoping 15.
Perfect. We love that. All right. Thank you so much. We'll get to you very shortly.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. James Weber of Alfonso &amp; Weber. Samantha Alfonso cannot be here tonight. She has the flu, and as a result, I will be filling in for her. In the continuation of this hearing, we have two witnesses, 30 to 60 minutes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Weber. So 28 Londonderry Way, approach. We're gonna swear you in.
Okay.
Raise your right hand.
I haven't done this before.
No, no problem. Just your name, first name for the record, and spell your last name, please.
So it's Dawn Janukowicz, J-A-N-U-K-O-W-I-C-Z.
Do you swear for the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
So if you could just give us a quick overview of your project, and then we'll have your architect step in, we'll swear him in, and then he can do the heavy lifting.
Great. So first of all, I just want to thank you so much for including us in the agenda, and I wanted to let you know that my husband, unfortunately, while he wanted to be here, he is also a bit under the weather, so he has made the decision to stay home. But just a little bit about our project. So we've lived in Summit since 2016. We started with renting here in town and really fell in love, and so we bought our current home in 2019, as I was pregnant with our third child, and we're really excited to make this our forever home. We love the street. We love the neighborhood, our neighbors, being next to the arboretum, and just the appreciation of the nature, and love the home itself, the traditional style of it, the character, and our intention is very much to preserve all of that. As our three children have grown and we are, you know, living in this home, we are truly starting to bust at the seams. And so really what we are proposing and what we've worked with Steve to put forward is a plan that really preserves the integrity of the home, that works within the existing footprint, but really that allows us to grow into this home and, again, to be here forever. We're proposing the addition of two bedrooms, one of which will serve as a home office/guest room. For me, I work from home two to three days a week. My husband is Australian. We have family in Australia and friends that are excited and eager to visit, and so, you know, that space will allow them the ability to come for longer periods of time, and will also allow each of our children to have their own rooms, while also giving us some space optimization and more space for the kids to play and for us to have the distinct spaces as we really look to the long term. So I probably will hand to Steve unless there are any questions for me, but again, what you see really, again, attempts to satisfy our long-term family needs while really minimizing any kind of optical changes for the home itself and certainly within the neighborhood. So thank you for hearing us.
Any questions from the board for this witness? Seeing none. Our board professionals?
No.
Any questions for this witness from the audience? Seeing none. All right. I think it's a good time to hand it off to your architect.
You state your first name and spell your last name for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Stephen Hochstein, S-T-E-V-E-N-H-O-C-K-S-T-E-I-N. I am a principal of AHM Architects, 281 Main Street, Milburn, New Jersey, and my license is current.
Would the board like to accept this as expert?
You just tell us a few boards that you've testified.
Sure. I've testified in front of this board, not very recently, but I have. I think some of your members are still here from way back. I testified in front of Milburn, Chatham, Summit, Springfield, Westfield, and I have been licensed for well over 20 years.
Perfect. We will accept your credentials. Welcome.
Thank you.
Could you just please raise your right hand? You swear for the testimony you're about to give is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, at your request, I'm gonna make this as quick as possible. The house is currently a single-story house with, on a sloped lot, with a walkout basement in the back. And what happens is because of the way the lot is sloped, when you do an addition on a property that has a steep slope on it, as you push out towards the back, there is a thing called the, it basically makes it whether the basement is considered finished space or not. And so there was some discussion as to whether that lower level was considered a story or not, and after we originally presented our plans, the board engineer said that he thinks that we may need a D variant because we were increasing the size of the house. Even though we were doing a small addition on the back because it's on the lower part of the lot, it would trigger the basement as being considered as living space. After some going back and forth, we had a topographical survey done, which I was asked to, I have a copy of it, I'm gonna hand in. I don't know if you want to mark it. And the, after going back and forth, the engineer and the planner agreed that it is considered a basement, and consequently, we don't count that as floor area, and because of that, we are retracting our D variants, we only need the C variants. So I don't know if you want me to mark this?
Yeah, so that's not part of your original submitted document?
I don't, Chris told me he didn't get it in time, so we should submit it this evening.
So, yes, please mark it.
A1?
Yes.
You all have a copy of it, but he just said it wasn't in time.
Better safe than sorry. Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, that's A1.
A1?
Yes. Mr. Chairman?
We also received it and reviewed it.
Okay.
And we concur.
Okay.
What is the date of the document?
The date of the document is February 21st.
Okay, thank you. And that was prepared by?
It was prepared.
Surveyed by?
So, engineer. Yes, a licensed professional engineer, and they submitted it, and it was distributed to the planner and the town engineer. So with that being said, it is a single-story house. It's in the R15 zone where they require 15,000 square feet. We only have 10,678 square feet, so the lot is substantially undersized. There is only one house adjacent to the property. If you look on the cover page, there's a house on the east side, but on the west side and in the rear, as the property rationale, it's against the arboretum. So there's really no building next door that is impacted by this. So what we're going to do is, there's a 10 by 16 family room on the first floor, and what we're going to do is we're gonna take that down. There's an unfinished or unconditioned porch underneath. We're going to remove that, and we're gonna add a 16 by, make sure I get the size right. Sorry. Want to get the right size?
I don't know.
Yeah, eight, right. Only change on the first floor is we're adding a 16 by 17 six family room, which is a modest-sized family room, and then we're also taking down the existing deck and replacing with another deck. There are currently three bedrooms on the first floor, and two bathrooms in the house, a kitchen, dining room, and living room. And as you can understand with, well, there's one in the basement.
Yes.
On the first floor I'm talking about. And so as you can, as Dawn said, they're really outgrowing the house. So one of the things that she asked us to do is figure out how to add on to this house and have it look like nothing was done from the street. So everything that we're doing is in the back of the house. So what we're proposing is to do this family room on the first floor, and then on the lower level, we're taking down this screened patio, and we want to put two bedrooms and a bathroom on the lower level, so that they'll have room in their house for their family and also for the office that Dawn mentioned. We also want to finish the basement area here, make a rec room, because with three children, there's really nowhere for the kids to play that are independent of where the parents are, so it's nice to have separate space between the kids and the parents. The other thing we're doing is there's a very, very deep garage. So they needed a mudroom and a laundry room, so what we're doing is we're going to take the back part of the garage, and we're gonna put a mudroom and a laundry room down there. And as you can see, I showed the vehicles, they're easy, they'll fit, even with the storage space in front of that. One of the garages. The house is adjacent to the arboretum, so we're really not impacting any neighbors because there's nobody there. The neighbor on the right is the furthest away from the addition that we're because there's nobody there. The neighbor on the right is the furthest away from the addition that we're doing. And the, you know, like I said, there's no impact. And like I said, it's important to maintain the aesthetic. So we're limiting the addition. It's 128 square feet and of that, and also a deck. And of that building area is 344 square feet of deck. And the way Summit counts a deck is if it's over a certain distance from the ground, they count that as building, even though it's outside space. So that is really what's causing us to go over in our building area on the property. So I just want to go over the variances. Like I said, I'm going to try to do this fast. We need a side yard variance because we're extending a non-conforming side yard at seven and a half feet. We're extending it eight more feet. That's a modest extension. Again, it's only one story, so it's minimal impact. So we need to extend a side yard variance. The building coverage, because of the deck and the building, we have, we're going from 20.6% to 21.8% and 18% is required. So we're asking for a little increase in building coverage. We're also asking for a rear yard setback. If you look at the site plan, there's a curve at the back left corner of the lot. And because that curve encroaches on the building, if this was a rectangular lot, we wouldn't need this. Because we're cut off at that corner there, we need a minor rear yard setback as well. And then lastly, we're asking for a lot coverage variance. The existing lot coverage is non-conforming. So what we're doing is to trade off for the addition that we're doing, we're going to take away driveway. So even though there's no net change in the coverage, because we're already over, we still have to ask for a variance. But there's no increase in lot coverage. And we believe that these hardships of an undersized lot, the pre-existing non-conforming side yard, the curve at the back of the house that I explained, and the fact that the building coverage is only 128 square feet and 344 square feet of his deck, we think that's also a reasonable request. We really worked hard to maintain the scale of the house. If you look at the front elevation, there's no change to the front. The before and after are identical. The rear, we're just taking this family room that's there and we're just extruding it towards the back another eight and a half feet. On the side, sorry, thanks. As you can see, we're just taking this extension and we're just adding eight and a half feet on to what's already there. We're not going any higher. The historic commission noted that the only thing that they had requested is that we maintain existing materials. And after talking to Dawn, she said that even the slate roof, they're willing to do the slate roof on the addition, even though you can't see it from the street, they're going to do the addition with a slate roof. And so they really like to have, maintain the character of the house. The other comment was, there was a question from the planner about the grading on the side because it was a little different than what was presented here. So I have an amended side yard, which is in the report. Here's an extra copy for you. And I don't know if you want to mark this, A2. This is an amended side yard, which just shows a change in the grade a little bit from what you have. And because of that, we're going to have to put a little window well in. But because we don't go out more than three feet with the window well, it really doesn't change the grade plane. So I can hand that in as well. And that's really the only things that affect, as far as the staff comments. And we really think that this is going to have a positive impact for the owner. And there's really no negative impact to the city or to the neighbors because we really have a very minimal impact. And that was vast enough.
That was perfect.
Thanks.
Board professionals, do you have any questions for this witness?
I do, yes. So thank you for noticing the conflict with the window on the side.
Yes.
And by putting in that window well, you're then pushing it out three feet closer to the property line, which I don't think affects your setback at all.
No.
So I'm not suggesting that. But that changes how you grade that property. And I don't see that on the grading plan then.
I believe, this, I don't know if you have a copy of this one. This is what we were asked to, oh, you do have that same one. You mean the window well is on, yeah?
Yeah, it's not shown on here. So if you're pulling that out three feet.
We're just going to do a little well there. And so if that's, you know, we'll agree to amend the grading plan to show that if this is approved when we present it.
Would that window well need to be an access window well for egress from the?
That's why we're doing it. And so it's only going to be down like about a foot and a half or so on the high side. And it's almost level with the grade on the back side. I have an extra one of these.
I have.
I actually need one. Thank you.
So we had actually, the plans that you have in front of you, we had received and reviewed, even though, you know, because I knew this kind of conversation was going to come up. And when I looked at how that grade was impacting the side yard, I was really just looking to see is the drainage going to be impacting the neighbor at all, even though it's the arboretum? Like what's going to happen with the drainage? Do you want to testify to anything on that?
We'll work with the town engineer if there's anything special that he wants us to do as far as drainage. But I don't believe that it's going to really impact the drainage in any way. Just that little three foot by, you know, three foot area way is not going to affect the grading, the drainage.
So our review of it was that, you know, as presented on the engineering plan that you're looking at, the topo plan, was that, you know, it appeared that the drainage was fine. I do see that if you put a window well in there and still try and grade it, it is going to impact how that water flows around there. So we are going to have to come to some agreement.
I'm okay with.
I'm fixing the grading on the side.
Well, we'll work with the town engineer and do whatever they ask to, you know, address any, you know, so we don't adversely affect the neighbors. We're fine with that.
We can make that a condition of approval in addition to following everything in the engineer's letter that we specifically mark the drainage impacted by the window well as approved by you or the town engineer.
Okay.
So get that covered.
I would, I would think that if you were inclined to approve this, that would probably be a good way to go.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. And as you heard stated, there is no increase in impervious coverage on the property because they're giving a little and taking a little. So there's really no stormwater drainage that's required on this. I think that's really all I had.
And just a few questions with regard to the setback variance you're asking for. There's a little bit of a graphic difference between your grading plan and the actual site plan you show on your first, on your cover sheet. What is the actual projection of the addition being proposed?
It's eight and a half feet.
That's eight and a half feet? Okay. So you're projecting that additional eight and a half feet. Is there any other, why does it make sense at this location from an architectural perspective?
Well, first of all, on the other side of the house is the driveway and the garage. So we couldn't get into the garage if we did it on that side. And I do have an amended cover sheet, which I'm going to submit, which takes out the D variance and shows that. So really, and also the interior plan, the way it works, that it's where the family room should be. It would be back to the bedrooms if it was on the other side. It just didn't make sense.
It would affect the flow and the configuration of the building. Okay. The deck itself, I just wanted to double check something because in some of the plans, it was a little bit confusing. You're replacing it, right?
We're taking out the deck.
But you're replacing.
Replacing it. And also, I don't know if you noticed, we're going out just a little bit past with the edge of the deck. And really because Dawn and her husband like to sit there and see the arboretum. So they want to be able to go out and like kind of see around the corner and see into the, the nature.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that point. Let's see. You talked about the impervious coverage. I know we covered that as well. The AC units, will there be any AC units?
Yes, they will. And we're probably going to put them in back of the addition because we don't want to go into the setback. So we'll put them in back.
I think that's all the questions I have. Thank you. Great. Thanks, Ed.
Any questions from the board for this witness?
Yeah, I have just one question. I don't really know the answer, but I'm just curious if somebody else does it. Every time I've seen one of those egress window wells, I've seen plenty of them. They always had drains in them. Is that a requirement or is that by choice?
If it's, if it's an independent well with, it's high on all sides, we would probably have to put some kind of drain in it. But if, if you look at the sketch that we handed out, one, one side of the well is actually to daylight. So it's really almost like a little two-sided retaining wall.
The only reason I'm asking is because every time I've seen one, they've always had a drain in them. So I don't know if that's required or it was just by choice.
So we're going to get an amended site plan showing the window well, right?
Correct.
Along with the grading proposed around it.
Correct.
So then if it needs a drain, we'll flag it and make sure that they add it in.
And this is a little unique because it's not like you typically see a window well, which like it's a hole in the ground. This is, on one side, it's actually open to grade.
Any questions from the public for this witness? Seeing none. All right. Do you have anything you'd like to say in conclusion?
Just thank you for.
Sir?
Thank you for considering our proposal. And yeah, we, I think the main thing is we're willing to work with the asks and the observations that were put forward to make sure that everyone's comfortable with the plans that we move forward with.
And I do have, is there anything that the board members would want to ask me that would affect them in some way that I need to answer the questions?
You kind of expressed your, why the deck is bigger. I was going to ask, just make the deck smaller and then you don't have to worry about so much of the, is it the building coverage or lot coverage? But you kind of answered that question. I know it's kind of a give. As opposed to, it's more of a want than a need.
Right. And again, because the deck is so high up, it counts as building, even though, you know, it's a little awkward for us to. But they do want to be able to go out there and see the beautiful backyard. It is pretty shallow.
But they look straight out. The back is the arboretum, correct?
Right. And the arboretum kind of wraps around their whole property.
Thank you. Any public comments at this time? Seeing none. I believe we'd like to know how many votes we need for this.
Only four votes.
Four votes. All right. Let's go into executive session. Who would like to start?
I'll start. Well, I just, I want to say that I really appreciate the thoughtful plan that you put forward here. You know, driving through your neighborhood, I definitely noticed sort of the character that, of the houses on the street and that you're really keeping in, you know, you're trying to accommodate your family, but still keep the house and the character of the neighborhood. I did see people hiking in your back, off your backyard today on one of those arboretum trails. So I can see where, you know, it could be pleasant to have the view there. I do, I appreciate the removal of some of the driveway to kind of make it a wash on the current situation where your existing is non-conforming for lot coverage. And rather than exacerbating that by even a couple feet, you found a way to keep it in where you already are. I don't see any issues with impacting neighbors. Again, you're really not bordered by anybody on two, well, three sides of the house if you count the street. I could support this plan.
Thank you, Mary.
I just have, I appreciate that you did take the historic preservation commission's comments in play and that you are following the recommendations. Thank you. So I can support this application.
Anyone on this side?
I can support the plan as well for the previous comments made by my fellow board members.
Thank you. I too can support this application. Sympathetic to the undersized lot. I believe your addition is a vast improvement to the house and certainly restrained, as you described. Barely visible from the street is always something that gets our attention as a board. And I am too sympathetic to the penalty that you're experiencing due to the elevation of the deck, you know, triggering that calculation of building area. So with that, I think we are ready to take a vote. Let's continue. Can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kirin?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Zahn?
Yes.
Ms. Chiefo?
Yes.
Mr. Chanjuli?
Yes.
Mr. Nearing? Chairman Lycus?
Yes.
Was there a motion to approve?
I was just going to say that.
Sorry.
I was just getting ready to make the motion. I'll make the motion that we move this.
Second.
I was just getting ready.
Do we need to vote again?
Do we need a motion that our votes count?
Mr. Kirin?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Zahn?
Yes.
Ms. Chiefo?
Yes.
Mr. Chanjuli?
Yes.
Mr. Nearing?
Yes.
Chairman Lycus?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weber? What do you got for us?
A continuation of the hearing. Just wanted to have a, I can find it. Down here. Thanks.
Sorry.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you, James Weber of Alfonso and Weber on behalf of the applicant at 573 Springfield Avenue. This is a continuation of the application as the board heard on January 8th. We have two witnesses, originally Charlie Ottler and Rudy Toltenholzmann testified. So we concluded with the principal and the civil engineer. Tonight, we are proposing to have the architect and the planner testify with regard to the proposal. By way, if I can just remind the board as to the variances that are associated with this application. Variances stem in the O R C one where the purpose is to maintain a residential character. But it also has as one of the principal uses to try to use the existing building. As part of that, the building has been examined by Tom Bijak, our architect. And then during the period of time that this was adjourned, given the board's expressed desire to have applications moved more quickly, what happened was that Charlie and Tom had a structural engineer come and look at the property. That structural engineer also filed a report with DCS. And that has been, and that report has been distributed, distributed among the staff that advises the city. Among those reviews was the HPC. And the HPC acknowledged that, yes, the building cannot be salvaged. But they do request that consistent with the O R C one, that it be maintained, that the new building be consistent with the design criteria set forth in the DRO. That's also a requirement in the O R C one, and that is something that the applicant agrees to. And it has been designed in a way consistent with the design standards of the O R C one. With regard to the variances, one of the variances is the lot coverage. And as testified to by Rudy, that is a function of an area that at the back of the property, when we look at the north arrow on the right-hand side, at the back of the property, there is an easement. That easement has been paved by the northern property owner. As a result, that is counted in lot coverage, but it's not used by the property owner here. So in other words, you have your neighbor, they have a driveway on your property, it's been paved. As a result, that contributes 472 square feet to the lot coverage. Likewise, there's an ADA. Likewise, there's an ADA ramp that's been constructed, that will be constructed, as well as the open front porch. When those are considered in lot coverage, they increase the lot coverage to the point of 67.1. When they are not included, that brings the lot coverage down to 61.19. Existing is 65.3. With regard to the floor area ratio, the structure itself above grade constitutes around 4,400 square feet and would be a FAR of 31%, where in this zone, 40% is the limit. However, because in the non-residential use, you count the basement, 1,500 square feet is used for an assembly room in the basement. And as a result, that bumps the FAR up to 41.3, if I'm not mistaken. As, that's where that 1.3 excess comes from. With regard to the side yard setbacks and the buffer that's required, this is an existing configuration. You have a driveway going in, you have a driveway going out. And that has presented a lawfully existing condition that inhibits the extent to which the property can be used. With regard to other variances, I don't recall any additional variance. Ah, yeah, the off-street parking, 20 spaces are required, 15 are provided. But given the nature of this real estate practice, prominent properties, Sotheby's International, the need for all of that space to be used is just not there. So with regard to the particular use, it is something where the office space, I think that Charlie testified, there were probably three employees that are full-time at the site. Otherwise, the brokers and the real estate agents come in on appointments or to use the facilities. Every three weeks or thereabouts, there is a one-hour meeting of the entire team. Some join by way of virtual. And that virtual appearance, again, for one hour, you're talking around 20 hours a year. For this site, it would be here around maybe 10 or 12 because they also would show up at the corporate headquarters in Madison. I believe that covers the variances. And as a result, unless the board, what I was thinking with regard to the structural report, that does accelerate the questions that were raised by the board who's going to testify as to the structural integrity of the building. I believe that may have been satisfied to the board's satisfaction. So we might be able to move past Mr. Bichak unless the board has any questions of the architect. We could go right to the planner for the planner's testimony on the application.
Does anyone want to hear from the architect?
I actually would have a question about, you know, maybe one question.
I think the only thing that I would ask is since now you're telling us the structure is not salvageable, basically you're back to that clean slate which you wanted anyway. So why not just build a building that conforms? And maybe the architect can answer that.
Very good.
Yeah, and actually I just, I do have one question because, I mean, related to that because I think you said like even the Historic Preservation Committee said this structure had to be demolished. And I don't believe they said that unless, is there another statement besides what's in here?
Let me bring that up.
I think they said the HPC does not object to the proposed plan. But I don't think they said that they agree that it needs to be demolished. I think there's a distinction there. So I just want to know, is there some other document that we don't have?
I wouldn't believe that would be the case. And if I just bring this up. John Linsen also wrote the structural report.
He has, yeah, that's irrelevant.
He did find it to be very thorough and interesting reading. Thank you, Mr. Linsen. Here we are, Caroline Ting, HPC. Buildings of this vintage general typically have the need for structural enhancement and investment, the demolition and new construction require investment as well. With respect to 573 Springfield Avenue, the 1880 property has been altered such that many of the original features have not been retained. The HPC does not object to the proposed plan provided the new structure adheres to the design detailing and material standards in the DRO's Development Design Guidelines. Thank you, Ms. Zahn.
Yeah, okay, so that was the only statement. All right, thank you.
Unless there's any questions to make, I'll call Tom Bichak to the stand. He's sworn in.
Just want to make sure. Questions for Mr. Weber?
Just some clarifications with regard to the variances.
Okay.
Spell that out. There were 14 spaces proposed, right?
I think there's also an EV space.
EV space, okay, so you're taking credit for the additional EV. Okay, thank you. In addition to the parking variance, there was a variance for screening of parking. I think that was at five feet. And then a landscape buffer requirement, minimum loading space sign.
Yes, loading space, thank you.
And then the sign setback is as pre-existing. I think you want to maintain the pre-existing sign.
Correct.
And then the dumpster location.
They're keeping the same small trash area, but it will be upgraded.
Okay, thank you. I just want to talk about that.
Thank you, Mrs. Niedis.
Questions for Mr. Weber? Any questions from the board for Mr. Weber before he hands it off to his architect?
I have a question for the applicant. Will I be able to ask it later?
Yes, we can always recall.
Okay.
You want me to recall, Mr. Opler, now?
Sure, sure.
Charlie, can you come back up?
These witnesses are still, remain sworn in?
Yes.
I have a question for the parking. You're proposing it's going to be underparked. And my question for you is, I mean, that works for your business right now. What is, do you have a license for this business? How do we, I mean, what's, do you have any obligation to stay in this? I mean, you have no obligation to stay there. There's no reason that you can't build it and then just knock, you know, sell it to another, somebody else who might need the parking. So is there, do you have a franchise, like a set license that you know that you will be in this building for so many years?
If I can respond with regard to the franchise. But there is something within the DRO that will address the board member's concern.
Okay.
We're a franchise operation of Sotheby's, which corporate name is Anywhere, which is the corporate headquarters in Madison. They own Century 21, Cobble Banker, Sotheby's, so on and so forth. We've been in business 33 years. We just opened a new office in South Orange. This is just an upgrade because of the desire of our current landlord to develop their property. So we began to look for an alternate site, which is how we ended up at 573. And we're building this to keep our operation going in Summit. As far as the parking that you had asked about, we currently have seven spots. We're not looking to move this space and automatically double our staff because we now have more parking. We've always been a smaller broker by design with our companies with hundreds and 200 agents in a company. We've maintained in the neighborhood of 40 to 50 per office.
Do you see this project as proposed as meeting your needs of your franchise well into the future?
Yes.
And then with regard, may I? Then with regard to Ms. Chiefo's point of view, from the board's perspective, if there is a change in use that generates a higher parking requirement pursuant to the DRO, then that triggers a site plan review. So if, for example, this was going to be converted to a dentist's office, then that is going to increase the off-street parking requirement. At that point, it triggers a site plan review and they have to come back in front of the board.
If that's, I just want to ask Mr. Burgess, is that true? Because I don't mean, I don't, true is wrong, the wrong question. Is, I just want to understand because the use is now commercial and if a dentist moves in, it's still a commercial use? So if...
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I appreciate the compliment, Ed Snikus instead of Joe Burgess.
Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry. Yeah, I'm going, yes, I'm sorry.
But yet the, typically when you go from a medical type use, from an office, primarily professional office in this instance, going to a medical use, yes, that would trigger. If you go to another professional office, that's a different nuance. I'm not so sure they would be required to come back here in that regard. So really, from an office to an office perspective, that's probably how you need to think of this. If you think of it as a medical office, it would have to come back because it's much more intense, the use and turnover of parking spaces.
So it's change of use?
Yeah, pretty much.
Thank you.
Welcome back. Hi. My name's Thomas Bichak. I'm a licensed architect for Brian Siegel Architects.
Can you spell your last name, please?
B as in boy, I J A K.
And you were previously sworn in?
I was not sworn in previously. I was not here, I was actually sick that day.
Hey, raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And can you just state your qualifications for the board, please?
I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I'm in good standing with my license. I have presented before this board a little over a year ago as well as other boards of New Providence, Chatham Borough, Chatham Township, and the general areas around here.
Great, we will accept your qualifications. Welcome back.
All right, thank you. If anybody has any questions, there was some...
Well, if I can, Mr. Bichak. You're familiar with the application that's currently pending before the board?
I am.
And how did you achieve that familiarity?
Our firm, Brian Siegel Architects, was retained by Charlie Opler in order to evaluate the property at 573 Springfield Ave.
So you're the design architect on this plan?
Yes, we are.
All right, and you're familiar with the city of Summit and the development regulations ordinance of the city?
That's correct. We've been practicing in Summit for well over 20 years, so we're familiar with the DRO.
All right, I just wanted to set the, your familiarity with the application. You were going to say?
Are there any questions pertaining to, you know, there were some other...
Yeah, I have one question and just, there are a lot of houses in Summit that are historic. This building has this amazing slate roof and some really cool, you know, on the third floor, there's some pretty cool finishes. And, you know, I've seen a number of homes where there, you do have this problem with the lolly columns and you have to replace the lolly columns. And, you know, there's soft ground underneath one part of the house and they have to do some structural improvements. They jack up the floors, they do all kinds of things. Just wondering what, you know, could that hap, could you do that on this building?
Well, with this building, oh, sorry.
Yeah, just wondering if that's a possibility.
Well, the historic nature of this building, nothing really original besides the roof is original to this property. In the 1970s, an addition was done where it was converted from a home to a commercial space. And during that time, they stripped it of all of the original character. They've got aluminum siding, aluminum wrap trim. They installed casement windows pushed to the corners of the building. They added this wraparound addition that has a flat roof on the interior. They basically stripped all of the original character of this home of any original finishes. So it's all like 1970 finishes of the trim, the railings. It's got dropped ceilings with fluorescent fixtures. Really, nothing is original from that era of the original house as well as, over the years, to accommodate the commercial aspect of the building, in the attic, they installed HVAC systems. And all the ductwork has basically been cut through the existing structure and has really undermined the existing roof. That was like basically the only part of the original structure. And, you know, there's leaking. And to say, to repair this, there's nothing original to the character of that original building left. And to mention also, the foundation is an old rubble stone foundation that in the areas that it's exposed, you can tell that there's settlement. There's been patches where they've tried to add brick and concrete to kind of accommodate and prop it up. But when you stand in the middle of that building, all four corners, it slopes a good 2% to 3% grade to all corners. So everything is settling and, you know, that's based on the foundation failing. So that was the purpose of, when we evaluated this property to begin with, that was the intention, but very quickly we realized that it was, you know, unsavable.
Were the dormers added in the 70s renovation, too?
I think they might be original to the building. Although the windows have totally been changed because that, the, an original 1880s home would most likely have had double-hung windows. And with all the casement windows installed, all that original character has been removed.
I have a question. So the style of the original house was Queen Anne?
Yes.
Okay, and have you been able to find any sort of pictures? I mean, I know the registry that we have at Summit, our online registry has the building with the addition already on. Have you been able to find anything like...
I have not found anything. I mean, we found records of the original building, but then that one-story addition being added in the late 70s, that was all that we found.
Was that considered to maybe at least, even if we couldn't, if you couldn't salvage it, to at least keep it in that style?
In the style of...
Of Queen Anne, you know, a Queen Anne Victorian like style home?
I mean, anything is possible, but, you know, this is something that the homeowner, I mean, the homeowner, the client, you know, kind of wanted to do something similar with this, you know, center hall colonial style building that looks very residential.
Now, you've taken photographs of the conditions of the inside yourself besides the structural report.
Yes.
Let me see if I can find those.
Is anybody not satisfied? I mean, I think I'm good with the testimony.
Yeah, yeah, the building's pretty bad. So my question is, you're basically starting with a clean slate.
Yes.
You're asking to stay in the ORC zone. So why not just build it to what's required or match what was already there? Size-wise, you're actually, if you're starting with a clean slate, we're asking for 17% over lot coverage. And then the floor area ratio, not a big deal, it's 1.6. But why not just try to meet what's there? I know it's probably going to boil down to usable space.
That's exactly it.
But they're going from a very small building to something that's a little bit bigger. It's, why not just, in the sense of being a good neighbor, just try to meet what's already there? I don't know if it's really for you or more for the owner or the manager. Because you're knocking a house down, so really you're starting at zero.
Yes. I mean, the only thing massing of the proposed structure that is really affected is the FAR. And massing above grade, it's 9% under what would be allowed if it was just the first and second floors. The basement is what really kind of drives the FAR being over and that's all subterranean space.
But it says your maximum building coverage is 20, excuse me, where was I? Maximum lot coverage 50% and you're at 67.1.
Well, and the setbacks as well, right? Because you could build it within the setbacks. If you're starting from the beginning, you don't have to be...
Well, the setbacks are met.
Well, aren't the side yard and the garbage? And there are a lot of things that don't conform with the new...
It's because generally you have the existing driveway in, you have the parking lot, and you have the driveway going out.
Again, you're back to a clean slate, so you can remove all, you're, it's a clean, basically you're buying a lot. Because then once you start a building down, it's gone and the zoning, that's, I shouldn't say the zoning, but it's gone, it's a clean slate. You could remove a driveway, you could do whatever you wanted to do and try to meet the requirements of this ORC zone. Because I'm struggling with going over 17%. So even if you went back to the 9,400 square feet, which is 65, you're matching what was already there.
Could you speak to the practicality of removing a driveway or trying to park the site a different way if you were to have a quote-unquote clean slate? If you could just talk a little bit about the conditions of using this as a... If you could just talk a little bit about the conditions of using this as a commercial space?
In terms of the existing usage, that has proven since the 70s to be effective. So having the single driveway in and then having the single driveway out has worked. In terms of the amount of parking, that has been something, again, is, has worked. In terms of the size of the house that was previously there, that was around 2,100 square feet?
2,100, just.
So it was 2,096. This building, in terms of coverage, is at 22. So it's not that much of a 2246, if I'm not mistaken.
2246, correct.
So in terms of the increase in the size of the building, in terms of coverage, it's not that significant.
So if it's not that significant, why just meet what's the, if it's not significant, then why do it?
Because what you're having is a structure that is approximately 4,400 square feet above grade in floor area ratio. So the floor area ratio isn't the issue. What we're talking about really, and building coverage is met. So in terms of the structure itself, it is, for all intents and purposes, compliant with your standards. What we're talking about is having a lot coverage, which includes that front porch. We could take the front porch off and take the ADA ramp. That also increases it. And then we have lot coverage that doesn't even get used by the property. Or in the 72 square feet. When you take that away, then you're back at 61%, which is less than what's there already. In terms of the driveway, you're going to have that driveway exist because it's subject to a carriage-road easement. So that carriage-road easement, even though the northern properties don't have access, I mean, they've stopped using it. Nonetheless, they have claimed it, and they continue to claim that right. So they don't want that easement removed. Likewise, the neighbor to the west has the right to use that easement.
So you're saying that the right of the neighbors to use that property is really the stumbling block?
It is.
But that's good, yeah. Thanks for that clarification.
You're welcome, Mr. Nelson.
I'm just wondering why we should not, you know, if it's a commercial building, handicap ramp is required, right? The ADA space is required. 20 parking spaces are required. So there's a variance for not meeting the number of parking spaces, but, and I get that. But then also to say, well, if you didn't count the ADA ramp, I just have a little trouble with that. Can you, like, I've not heard that before in any other kind of application. Just wondering, I don't know, if that's really of, if that's really the argument.
No, I can understand the vice chair's point of view with regard to the ADA ramp. What you're, the point that's being made is that, as with the front porch, right? When we say, oh, we'll take the front porch away, obviously, the front porch is not being taken away because it's an architectural amenity. What we're saying is, in terms of that kind of consideration by the board, the ADA ramp is something that, yes, necessary, but it does add additional coverage that wasn't necessarily there before. In terms of that ADA ramp, it's 170 square feet. If we don't count the ADA ramp, then the number, instead of being 61.19, and I have to do some math here, so instead of-
What's 61.19? I'm sorry. I see. 67.1, then it goes down.
I think you should start by getting rid of the driveway that's paved in the back of others' using. That's on their property. It's 400 square feet. That's a percentage.
So if you have your calculator, I don't have a calculator. So I've highlighted, that still thought showing up. Emma? So 9,231 minus 200 divided by here. So what are here? 14,481.
Were we talking about the back porch or the front porch?
So, and what Mr. B. Jack is working through, the lot coverage, 9,723 square feet. When you have the rear portion, and here I've been able to bring it up, as you look at the rear lot, you'll see that this area here, that the cursor is moving over, is paved. That is not their use. It's separated from their property by the landscaping, but it's used by the-
You can't even access it?
No. And it's used by the neighbors to the north for their multifamily behind them. So that's where, and that comes to 492 square feet, which brings us down to 9,231 minus 200 is 9,031 divided by 14,481. Thank you, Mr. Sneakers.
Do you have math for you?
If you don't mind.
No worries. I was writing it down. I was waiting for your answer. So 9,031?
9,031. 41.
62.3.
So attending to the vice chairwoman's astute comment, if you remove the ADA ramp from the calculation, what is created that adds to the lot coverage? You have the front porch, and you have the area in the back, the 472. And that gives you a lot coverage percentage of 62.3. So you're still below what's there existing. But the point the vice chairman has made is, good, well, the 65.3. All right. And again, you're dealing with the fact that we have pavement that we don't use.
That's the big thing.
The right-of-way, the carriage road.
How wide is the front porch?
33 foot high.
Yeah. How many square feet is that? 150 something?
168 square feet, approximately.
We show it on ours as 200 square feet.
You got the back?
Oh, we're talking about the back?
No, it's just the front. You know what I didn't add? It was the staircase. Yeah, 200 includes the front steps as well.
200 exclusive of the front steps?
It keeps the front steps, except for that first truck. Does anything above 12 inches above grade is kind of its building coverage.
Thought I made that smaller.
To the extent, well-
I know it's architecturally easy.
Yeah, that's the whole point. And then the point of view was, come on, machine.
I like the way you looked at your thought.
So just to, I guess, clarify just one thing here. Because I think the concern is really putting in a building that's bigger than the building that's there. You're starting from scratch, and it's not bigger, right? The, or it's just, it is, it's 400 square feet bigger, and that includes the porch. So if we're just looking at the building coverage, you know, is it possible to, you know, make this that you can have the same amount of building coverage, you know, as opposed to lot coverage? You know what I mean? Where you're not really-
Are they still under for building coverage?
We're good on building coverage.
Yeah, you're good on building coverage. Yeah, so that's right. But that helps the lot, the whole thing, you know, it's a give and take.
The porch is the whole residential character kind of of the building. If you, you know, that was the intent to try and stay true to the ORC one.
By the real estate agents, the front porch is not going to be that much used. It's really, there is a true architectural amenity.
Say something. It was really for the look, more than anything else, because the parking's in the back, rarely will anybody come in the front door. Because if they park, they'll go right into the back door where the entrance is. So it really was, the intent was to make it look residential with the porch and just to give it some character for the area. It wasn't, it wasn't to, you know, sit out there and watch the traffic, you know. You know, when the agents are there, they're working.
Wait, and people may help you on?
I think that's a trade-off. The trade-off is the positive appearance of the patio, the front porch, versus just having a bare building.
Just having a bare, yeah.
Or would a portico, do you think, can you tell us if you think a portico would look, how a portico would look on this particular structure as opposed to the front porch? Just because it would be fewer, you know, there are a lot of porticos in Summit.
Yeah, I mean, a Center Hall Colonial, you've seen plenty of them with just a portico on the front. But just the wider porch was something that was just that aesthetic that we were looking for in the ORC residential.
You also have a front sidewalk that goes from the sidewalk on Springfield up to the front. So again, an amenity, something that gives that residential character, which is so important to the ORC one. And that's, again, something that, as Charlie just indicated, parking's in the back. You're going to be using the back of the building to get in and out. But you're going to have a front sidewalk. It gives that appearance of, okay, yeah, residential.
Are you planning on putting furniture on the front porch? Or is it just going to be bare?
We might put something there just to have a look there, maybe plant, you know, some plant potters or something. But we're not going to put a ton of furniture. We just made, we don't have to put furniture. I just thought we'd put some plant-
I just think if it doesn't have furniture, it looks, it even looks sillier.
It looks barren. So we were going to put, you know, like a bench on each side and some planters. Yeah, a number of our offices are in residential neighborhoods, Ridgewood, Haddonfield, Saddle River. And this is traditionally what we try to do, to give it a residential look for the neighborhoods that we're in.
And just, are the windows for the basement usage, are they all egress?
We do have egress. I mean, we have a rear stairwell out the back to the egress. The windows on the side, the west side of the building, is really, because that's the assembly room that we're intentional, I mean, planning on being used, you know, minimally, like Mr. Weber was mentioning a couple times a month. And that was just simply to get some daylight into those areas of those window wells.
Your egress will be to code?
Yes.
Board professionals, do you have any questions for this witness or the prior witnesses?
No, I do not.
No. Just real quick, where's the handicap ramp? It's along the side.
It's in the rear.
It's in the rear, over the stairs for the rear act?
It's on the opposite side of the stairs.
Okay, I see it. Yep, got it. Okay, very good. Thank you. Ed, no questions, sorry. Thank you. Any questions from the public for the witness or the previous witnesses that testified? Seeing none.
Thank you. I would ask that John Barry, he called for the stand, he's sworn in to give testimony in this matter.
Good evening.
State your name for the record. Please spell your last name.
Sure. John Barry, B.A.R.R.E.E.
Thank you. Do you swear from the testimony you're going to give is, you're about to give is going to be the whole truth? Sorry. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And could you just please give your qualifications briefly?
Sure. I'm a licensed professional planner in New Jersey, member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I have a master of city and regional planning degree, and have been practicing as a planner for a little over a decade. I've been before this board and others, before this board as recently as last month, a few weeks ago. Nice to see everybody again. Thank you.
You're familiar with the application?
I am.
How did you achieve that familiarity?
I was brought on board by the client, reviewed the plans, met on several occasions with the team, visited the property, and reviewed the professional reports. And I watched the YouTube video of the meeting from January.
And you're familiar with the City of Summit's Development Regulations Ordinance and its master plan?
I am, indeed.
You had a chance to prepare a report in connection with the proposal that's been presented to the board tonight?
I have, yes.
Would you be willing to share that with the board?
Sure. So the board is well aware, at this point, of the parameters of the development, the proposal to demolish the existing structure. We've heard about the structural conditions report and the response and other testimony offered there, too. The subject property is located on Springfield Avenue. It's in the ORC one zone, which is an interesting zone in that it only includes this property and the immediate neighbor to the west. So the zone only consists of the two lots that actually share a common driveway here that we heard about. The existing building dates back 1800s. It was converted to a commercial use in the late 70s, more or less. In reviewing the city's historical records, the 1989 survey of properties that was prepared, you can see the building much as it is with the addition on the front. I believe Ms. J. F. O. was referencing that report earlier. And at that time, in the 1989 report, the determination was that much of the historical character of the building had already been lost. So as to the relief that we're seeking, we're here to discuss a D1 use variance, kind of an unusual one in that the use itself is permitted in the zone. Professional offices, which have been located at this site for, going on close to 50 years, have, are a permitted use, but the caveat being that they be located within an existing structure as of when the zone was put in place. So the ask is really to seek a new structure to house a permitted use. And we've heard the justification from other professionals about why the existing structure does not seem able to be saved. And a better alternative, from a planning perspective and from a public health and safety perspective, would be to construct a new building on site. So as to the suitability of the site for the use, it's proven itself suitable over many years in terms of operation as a professional office. We've heard representations that both attorneys and accountants, very similar trades to realtors, have occupied the property over the years. And the site has other improvements that lend themselves to being reused, that speak to its suitability to continue as it has been used. So the ability to reuse the driveways and circulation patterns that will not introduce changes to Springfield Avenue, the county road system, certainly speak to the suitability of the property. As to special reasons to grant the D1 use variance, we look to the purposes of zoning. Purpose A deals with guiding the appropriate use of property to promote the public health, safety, morals, and welfare. The use, as on its face, is permitted in the zone, so it's certainly appropriate for this location. And as far as advancing the public welfare, the building, which has conditions that have, over time, deteriorated and would likely, if they were inhabited as they are today, pose a hazard, the elimination of those conditions and the replacement with a new code-compliant structure, all handicap accessibility and so forth that is not fully present today certainly represents a benefit in that context. Furthermore, purpose G of zoning, to provide space in appropriate locations for a variety of commercial uses. The property is suited for this commercial development per the zoning, this type of office use. It's located just outside the central business district, so it provides a lower-intensity commercial zone for an office use that can be compatible with its residential neighbors because of the form of the building. So, and we're trying to preserve the intent of the ORC one zone by providing a residential-style structure. And then finally, as far as other purposes, purpose I, to encourage a desirable visual environment. We have reports from the Historic Preservation Commission who have reviewed the proposed design. And while they've couched it in some terms, they view it favorably and are supportive of the proposal. And ultimately, the design with its residential character, the porch, even though it does increase very slightly the footprint of the building that exists today, does give it a residential character, which is certainly consistent with the intent and purpose of the ORC one zone. the ORC one zone. The other D relief that the application requires is a D-four variance for exceeding the permitted floor area ratio. Forty percent is permitted in the zone where forty-one point six percent is proposed. The zone treats floor area ratio differently, whether the structure is residential or commercial. So if this were a residential building, the floor area ratio in the basement would not be counted, but because it's a commercial building, we are considering it part of the floor area. So without the basement, we'd be at thirty-one point oh-two percent. Purpose of floor area ratio controls is generally to control the bulk mass volume of a building and also the intensity of the use on the property. The area in the basement's not perceptible from the street. It's not contributing to that bulk and mass of the building. And as far as the intensity of the use goes, it's really the kind of as-needed auxiliary space for the periodic gatherings. It's not contributing to increased staffing at the building, so it's not really an intensification of the office use. And so with that in mind, it's my opinion that the site can accommodate the use despite the exceedance of the floor area ratio. We had a summation on the other C variances. I'll try to go through them briefly. We talked, we heard about parking, based on the square footage and the requirements of the city's DRO. Twenty spaces are required, fourteen physical spaces plus an EV credit, so fifteen spaces are proposed for the use. You've heard about the operation and the typical day-to-day traffic and the typical day-to-day occupancy of the building. It's based on real-life examples of this business operating elsewhere in Summit. They've successfully operated for a number of years with seven onsite parking spaces, so this represents, this would represent an increase from what they're used to today. And really, the only, to the extent that on those ten to twelve occasions a year when a large meeting is necessary, there are other options for street parking across the street. There are other options to carpool, which is something that folks are familiar with today, and certainly many people join virtually. So the site can accommodate the use in terms of the parking. And you've heard about, to the extent that any future use occupies this, the parking would have to be reviewed prior to any change in occupancy. The lot coverage, we have extensive discussion on the lot coverage, so unless everybody wants to do the math again, I will spare you extent, on that. I will just add that the, if there were a world where we were preserving the existing building, it's likely that there would have to be some expansion to accommodate accessibility requirements and other modernization improvements. So, not that we discount the ADA ramp fully, but acknowledging that any modernization of an older structure will, tends to involve a little bit of flex to the overall footprint of coverage and disturbance. Existing conditions that are either being maintained as they are or enhanced in some way, we have a parking lot screening requirement of five feet, where that's not being met in some locations, but new plantings are being proposed along the rear property line.
If I can?
Yes.
I'm not sure that it is five feet. When I read the ORC one, it's a ten-foot landscape buffer shall be required along each side yard and along each rear property line.
So it should be ten feet. I apologize.
No, no, no. I think we've heard five feet before, and I was just taking that opportunity. So it is a ten-foot. And so when we look at the rear, we see that from the lot line, you have a more significant setback in terms of the landscape. And one of the points, too, and I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Barry.
That's okay.
This, if the board approves the application, is going to be subject to an enhanced landscape plan that's been required by Mr. Linson. Even though there's a landscape plan that's been shown here, the original discussion with regard to Mr. Linson was that we needed that landscape plan enhanced, because he wanted some trees removed, he wanted to address the property to the east. We can't do anything about the west because that's the carriage road easement, but certainly it's something that can be further improved. So I apologize for that interruption. The five feet that you're talking about is what the five feet is existing now.
Well, you got it up, you want me to?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, ask the chairman for permission to speak.
Please.
With regard to that, I think what we had identified in our memo was in your park, in the parking standards, not necessarily ORC one, but in the parking standards, it requires a minimum five-foot buffer. That's why that buffer, that variance was triggered. So I think it might be appropriate to identify. I think you're addressing it, but it's a matter of just for the technical.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Sneakers.
There, yeah, two separate but overlapping standards, essentially, with the five-foot parking screening, which also we have to consider to the neighboring properties to the sides. There are, there is existing vegetation on the east, eastern property line and on the easterly, neighborly, neighboring property. And the area that, the rear parking lot on the subject property is essentially located near the parking and loading area behind the townhouse development and garden apartment development nearby. The landscape buffering we just heard about is stacked with the parking screening, and the existing buffering will be enhanced through the new landscape plan. We heard operational testimony about loading. A loading space is technically required, but for an office use like this, typical parking space is adequate to accommodate the periodic FedEx, Amazon, et cetera, type of delivery that would occur. The existing sign is set back twelve point one feet, where twenty-five feet is required in the front yard. That's going to be reused in the same location, just have a new sign face put on to identify the business. The trash disposal location is required to be ten feet from a residential zone. The existing location is proposed to be reused. Again, where that is located on the east side of the property, oh, I have the cursor. So it's right in this location here, if we can see that. It really abuts the back driveway side of the neighboring property, so it's not right next to someone's windows or right next to someone's usable yard area. And then, lastly, we have existing, an existing light pole that will remain that exceeds the permitted height. There may be some upgrades to the fixture and additional shielding added just to modernize it because it's a little bit older fixture, but the intent is to reuse that in kind with modest updates. So as to the, as to the C variances, the purposes of zoning outlined for the use variance continue to apply. There are several hardship issues associated with existing conditions that are legal on the site, but I won't belabor that point. With regard to the negative criteria, can the proposal be granted without substantial detriment to the public good? I would posit that it certainly can. The use is consistent with the zone. It's consistent with the recent, all of our memories of the property, I'm sure. So the use and compatibility with its neighbors is not going to change. The updates and modernization to the building will provide benefits. And then with regard to the consistency and any detriment to the ordinance and master plan, the use is permitted. So there's certainly been an anticipation that it would be located here. And the purpose of the ORC zones is to encourage investment and, to the extent feasible, encourage the retention of existing residential buildings, failing that to promote residential character in an office environment, and that's what we're doing here. So I think we're right on point with all of that. So thank you.
Board professionals, any questions for this witness?
I do have one. Did you say something about the light pole on the property will remain?
Yes.
I did, yes.
And that it's taller than allowed? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so, and will it comply with all the light, the other lighting requirements? Spillage onto the adjacent property?
So the intention is to comply. To the extent that there may be point-two foot candles rather than point-one, I would offer testimony to the effect that it won't be a substantial detriment to the neighboring property. And in the location, the light pole is in a similar location to the refuse enclosure. So again, it backs up to what's more of a service side access to, on the neighboring properties. And there is substantial vegetation in that area on the neighboring property as well as this property. So if the final lighting design, as it shakes out from the manufacturer, comes at point-two rather than point-one, or point-three rather than point-one, it'd be a de minimis exception, and the applicant will do everything possible to shield and prevent that from happening.
Okay. So is there the possibility that it could, the pole could meet the requirements of the zone?
What?
We've had that looked at, and the requirement's at eight-foot pole, uh, height. So you end up where you have additional eight-foot poles throughout. This has been a lighting fixture that has been there as far as we can tell since the commercial office building conversion in nineteen seventy. We have had it, some light scans done, and currently it exceeds the lighting requirements under the ordinance. So when you heard Mr. Barry say, we're going to do the best that we can to bring that into compliance, right now it's a pre-existing non-conforming pole with a pre-existing non-conforming spillage. But again, as indicated, it's been something that has not proven to be a detriment. So it's something that they will attempt to bring into performance, but as was indicated, you're working with something that has been there for fifty years. So to, and in fact, the ORC one actually wants shoebox, light fixture shall be of a shoebox or similar design. So it, it's interesting that the ORC one wants a shoebox type of light fixture. And the shoebox is just the rectangular fixture on top, not very residential. But, so the whole point was to make sure it doesn't spill light upwards.
Okay, thank you.
Ed?
Thank you. When you talk about the office residential character, what is it about the proposal that exudes that from a planning standpoint to address the intent, focus of voices?
Sure. So I think largely we're focusing on the architecture here. The typical colonial style with the front porch, the front walkway connecting the front porch to the sidewalk is reminiscent of a residential structure. The lack of parking in the front yard, certainly tucking the parking behind does not give this the appearance of a heavy commercial use or a sort of more of an older style of office use. So I think putting the parking out of sight, giving the building a residential character, the exterior features and the enhancements with the porch, the window treatments, roofline, so forth, all of that speaks to fitting into a residential neighborhood without screaming, this is a commercial use, this is an office building.
Okay. When we look at the parking variance that's being proposed, there's a differential here between the, I guess, fifteen parking spaces and twenty parking spaces is required. You had noted in the regulations that if there was a change of use, it would require a review of parking. But yet if it was a change from a professional office to another professional office, it may not require that. What is it that would help safeguard that standard from creating a condition where people be parking off-site and creating issues?
So it would certainly depend on the type of office use. So you mentioned before the medical as a more intensive potential use. And the DRO does have different parking standards for a medical use, so if that type of use came in, the parking variance would be exacerbated and we would trigger further review. If a different type of professional office came in, a engineer's office or something of that nature, then I don't believe it would be subject to the same scrutiny. I think it would fall under the same type of professional office and have the same parking requirement. And at that point, you'd have a new tenant coming to a site with the hopes that they would understand the operational needs and limitations of the property that they're coming to and be able to accommodate it. There are off-site parking options available. Parking is permitted on the other side of Springfield Avenue, which is not ideal because you don't want people running back and forth across Springfield Avenue if you can avoid it. But there are places to park if needed in an overflow capacity. And as is not uncommon in downtown areas where you have large parking lots associated with uses that use them rarely, such as a church. There's a church several doors down that may provide a future opportunity for overflow parking on a as-needed basis, not necessarily for this tenant because it's not needed, but a future tenant may explore that for their own needs.
Looking at the parking calculation, the parking calculation include the basement as well?
It did, yeah.
I think it did.
Yes.
In that basement area, you're using like a third of that basement area, is that correct? For actual gathering space, the rest is being used for storage?
Yeah, so my understanding is that the center, center hall roughly of the basement is the circulation. If we're looking at the drawings, the right side is generally storage, the left side is the meeting or assembly room that's used on an occasional basis, not a, not a day-to-day office space.
Regarding the master plan, you didn't quite touch on the goals and objectives of the master plan. We identified a few things in our report.
Sure, yeah.
Wonder if you can address that for the board.
Sure, I was trying to spare everybody some time, but I'd be happy to go through them.
Try to be complete.
Yep, absolutely. So there are specific goals related to the ORC zone in the 2016 reexamination report that talks about maintaining and encouraging effective transition zones between commercial and residential areas and zones. At the time, there was a desire to assess the ORC zone to determine if maintaining the transitional character and incentivizing reinvestment are being met. Desire to maintain the prevailing character of the city's neighborhoods, which I think we're doing here. And then the more broad master plan goals, balance growth and development opportunities with the established pattern of development and existing infrastructure, reinforce the city as a desirable location for office research and other employment uses within its existing pattern of development, encourage a balanced development pattern which will protect and enhance long-term economic and social interests of present and future residents in order to maintain and improve the city's overall quality of life, support the upgrading of substandard properties in the city through code enforcement efforts, education, ordinance amendments, and other initiatives, promote a desirable visual environment, which dovetails with the municipal land use law purposes through creative and flexible development techniques, and to clearly define commercial and industrial areas with natural boundaries and effective buffers, which I do believe the application is working within all of those, those goals and objectives.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Questions from the board for this witness? When we talk about possible other occupants, I mean, other tenants moving into this space and having the understanding of the limits of the property, a little taken back by overflow parking being suggested for other, you know, one of the things we try to avoid in town is exactly what you mentioned, where we, overflow parking has to use somebody else's parking spot. So if this is occup, if the occupancy does change, there's no loading spot, there's no loading zone. So if they have a more intensive use, even though it's same type of use but more intensive, where would you propose a delivery truck, you know, stationary deliveries, pens, paper? There's no loading zone. So if it does change, what we're asked to do is give away a loading zone now, but if it does change down the road, that loading zone doesn't exist.
So with a, with a professional office use and the circulation pattern we have onsite, we have a driveway in that loops around the back of the building and out. Being a occupant of a similar scale professional office use that gets deliveries on a regular basis, I can offer some personal experience. We get, twice a week, maybe, we get Staples or WB Mason box, box van kind of thing. And they're able to pull in and around, stop, they don't need to park in a parking space because we're not dealing with a volume of people coming and going as we might be at a 7-Eleven or some other kind of retail establishment. Folks come into work in the morning and leave in the afternoon, and if you have an appointment, maybe you come and go once during the day. So to the, delivery people are on a schedule crunch, they're not interested in lingering. They'll be able to park the van, maybe they block a space for two minutes as they run in a quick hand truck of light office materials and back out. Because of the nature of a professional office use, that's the scale of delivery that any professional office use I can think of would be likely to get. The biggest delivery we get, we get five-gallon water jugs delivered. A hand truck can hold four or five of them, roll it in, roll it back out. Takes ninety seconds, maybe. So that, that type of loading, in my opinion, doesn't necessitate overbuilding the site. Same way we're talking about trying to limit coverage, we don't want to expand coverage to provide a loading zone that's unnecessary and then lead to more stormwater-related issues and other things that go along with coverage down the line. So sizing the parking lot for what is a relatively low-impact use in terms of commercial uses and not providing a loading zone just for the sake of providing one, although in some instances it might be needed. In this case, for a professional office, it's my opinion that it would be superfluous.
Just a question, maybe building off of Ms. Rafi's question about the light pole. And what's
And what's the hesitation, I mean, since you're basically demoing the house, right, rebuilding it, what would be the hesitation just to put in a compliant light pole?
So, I think the issue, so, to put in shorter light poles, we would have to put in more light poles, which would then lead to an issue of trying to, as you have more lights, it gets harder and harder to not have spillage. So, the intent here is to reuse what exists, screen it and upgrade it as best we can, and maintain the existing pattern that's existed on site.
I missed the point that you bring it down and then you need more.
Right, because we have to maintain a minimum standard for the parking and drive area for safety purposes.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to ask a similar question about the light poles, but I still have a
question about the light poles. Do we need to add a variance for that? I haven't seen that discussed.
It's a pre-existing non-conforming status, so it doesn't need a variance. If it ends up being lost, then they have to replace it with a conforming one. Granting a variance for it, then you can exercise more control, but then it also gives it the right to remain. So, if the board's interested in saying, "Okay, let's let the pole go," so say it gets knocked down in a windstorm, they can't put it back up. They now have to come back in either as for a variance to put it back up or come in with the eight-foot poles throughout the site to achieve that.
Yeah, I think in the past, I've been inclined to want to at least consider granting variance for that just for that exact kind of reason. I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I would rather see given that variance now since it's there and recognizing it than have to come back later on.
Well, certainly the applicant would appreciate that.
Yeah.
Because then if it is damaged in any way, then it's just repaired as is. And when it's, and again, the, when you look at the ORC-1, there's a requirement within it that'd be brought up to certain standards, and the city has adopted a 3,500 Kelvin level for the lights. So, while you can change the bulbs, you have to change them consistent with the 3,500. So, you're not getting the 4,000 bright, you're not getting the 4,500, you're going to get a 3,500 or lesser. So, you're going to end up with that warm white in there, but you're still going to need the lumens.
So, I would suggest adding that variance. I don't know if anybody else suggests.
We can add that.
I might have a different thought on that, but I think Mr. Chief, I had a question to ask.
Well, I wanted the question before we move on. The other question I have is about the number of parking spaces. And I heard Ed Snikus, he said fifteen, the variance says fourteen.
Fourteen.
What do they?
The reason being is that according to New Jersey law, you're allowed to take credit for the EV parking space as two parking spaces. So, therefore, that one space counts as two, so therefore they have a total of fifteen technically in the total number. Even though I don't appreciate that rule by the state, it's there.
So, what should the variance say then? Should it say fifteen or fourteen?
It should say fifteen compared to twenty.
Okay. So, I'll add.
Mr. Chief?
Yeah, I have a question about the parking. So, the way the current property is, there is, looks like there's what, fourteen, fifteen parking spots, that's how many parking spots there are currently, correct?
I have to take a look at the...
It looks, I mean, it looks like counted them up, I think it's almost the same, fourteen, fifteen. To get, was there a way to build the building to, it was the way the building was that we required twenty? Is there a way to build the building so that you could stay within the fourteen? Is that, I mean, am I wrong with, the twenty's coming from because the way the building's built, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The total square foot.
So, you could, if you didn't build the building as large, you could conform to the fourteen parking spots because there really is no other place, way to lay this out.
You really need to compare it to fifteen, not fourteen.
Well, fifteen, whatever, whatever. But twenty, I'm comparing, like, but I'm saying is, the twenty is coming in because we're too big of a building. So, if the building came down, how many, how much did the building have to be reduced in order to build to fit into the parking spots that you have?
The exact same...
I mean, spaces because you count the one as two.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
The exact same building with no basement.
And actually, I was going to ask that because the basement has to be counted.
The basement's being counted both toward floor area ratio and toward parking, and that is the exact difference between the provided parking and the required parking.
So, the basement's being counted, but it's not office space, not really office space.
Right.
What's the square footage per spot?
It's one per three hundred, I believe.
One per three hundred?
Yes, and the square footage of the basement is 1,548, so it's exactly five spaces.
What would the building as it is today require for parking spots?
I don't know that I, do we have this total square footage? We have the footprint.
Yeah, we have the footprint.
It's kind of all over the, I'm not sure exactly what. I'm afraid I...
And when we did the research to try and find the resolution, all we came up with were the deeds.
Well, I guess...
So, what would you, building coverage or floor area ratio? It doesn't say.
So, it goes, the parking goes based on floor area ratio, right, divided by three hundred, and since you're six thousand square feet, it requires twenty spaces, you have fifteen. To Mr. Snikus's point, I guess, you know, there was something you were getting at with the question about the lower level, and I guess, you know, maybe the mechanical room's really big and, you know, if you didn't count the mechanical room in there, you might only need nineteen, you know, you might need eighteen spaces or nineteen spaces. Because I guess if, when I'm looking at this and I'm looking at future tenants, right, if somebody else comes in here, what these three assembly rooms could easily be offices, the storage room could easily be an office, so I wouldn't necessarily be inclined to say that that shouldn't, you know, count towards the parking requirement, but I'd say the mechanical room, sure, you know, it's kind of big, and so that saves a space.
Would someone want to purchase or lease this building if they couldn't accommodate parking for their employees?
I don't know, I mean, if it's an engineering firm, you could easily have twenty or thirty people working in there to the point of not changing the use, but...
If you had a thirty-person firm, what would make you want to buy this building?
There are plenty of buildings in Summit that have office space for more employees than no parking sites. I don't think that's the... 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 I don't think that's the...
As soon as you go out to River Road, the building right near the Short Hills Mall that has been now vacant.
Hub insurance building?
Yeah, across, right, no, not the, but the one on the river.
I think it's 180 River Road.
Yeah, 180, and that's just sitting, and the, one of the benefits Summit has is the downtown has been working for offices. Soon as you go outside the downtown of Summit, you go to Berkeley Heights, their office complex, it's empty, vacant lots. So, the use here, because it's within the area, it's close enough to the CRBD that it's something that is going to be useful, but there's plenty of other office space throughout.
So, if the basement was not, did not have office space, then that would have to count towards the parking?
But by virtue of existing, we have, the basement exists as a structure, we have to count it.
Oh, so, let's put it on slab, that's the only way.
Or you make the floors smaller. Make the dimensions of each floor smaller.
Yes.
To meet, to meet the original fifty percent of the lot, which goes back to you have a clean slate.
And the basement's not existing because it's a new building?
Right.
Right? Is that, because you just said, oh, it's existing, so it counts, but it's counting because you're putting in something...
I didn't, I apologize, I did not say the basement, it's proposed, it's not, there is an existing basement to the building.
Right, but, so we're going on the proposed basement, yeah. I did have one other question besides the parking and the, you know, can you shrink the building? The light poles, I'm a little hung up on the light pole because, how much taller is the light pole than is allowed?
We...
How tall is the light pole?
Fifteen feet.
Okay, so, the difference between fifteen feet and eighteen feet, eight feet, is seven feet higher that that light, you can see it when you're walking across the street at night, whatever, you know, kind of, I think the purpose of the eight feet is to not have it be a nuisance for cars and people walking, driving, you know, just having, seeing that like a beacon. Even if you make it compliant with the amount of light, it's still at a higher elevation and possibly going to be viewed by other people. I don't understand why you wouldn't put in three compliant light poles if you need three light poles, right? Why, why stay with one light pole that's non-compliant? Why not just put in what you need to be compliant? This is a completely new structure, and I feel like there are a lot of asks here. A variance is, seems like an easy one to make compliant.
Especially when you're knocking the whole building down to start with.
Well, certainly, since we have to put in, I mean, on the one hand, the existing light pole, we don't have any neighbors. So, if there was an issue with regard to that pole being obtrusive, then we would have had people here addressing that. It is a shoebox fixture, and the shoebox fixture does focus the light directly in the area. It works. It provides that amount of light without now creating a series of additional light poles that would then be required to provide that. Remember too, with the lighting, they're also using the lighting that's on the building to help illuminate the parking space. So, you're ending up in a situation where you are providing that safety and security, and you're using something that has worked. So...
Are the lights, this is an abandoned building right now, so are the lights on every night right now? I mean, that, I don't think they, are they on right now, they are every night?
We spoke.
Yeah.
So, I've talked, and you indicated that the lights are still on.
Is the light pole visible from the street?
I haven't seen it, it's at the back if we can show where it is.
So, this is the existing conditions, so back toward the back of the property of a tree along the side of the driveway, and then another tree, and the light pole is tucked behind the existing refuse enclosure adjacent to the tree that's right along the property line, and there's some more...
Is the tree adjacent to the light pole taller than the light pole itself?
I believe it is, yes.
And you're going to replace the head on the fixture?
There wasn't a plan for it.
It shows that on the site.
Yeah.
It shows that you were going to replace the head.
Yes, yeah, the intention is to upgrade that fixture and provide cutoffs and to the extent needed to comply with the spillage requirements.
What's a cutoff?
Sorry?
What's a cutoff?
So, if you had an old-style streetlight with a dome effect where you can see the entire glass bulb hanging down versus having something that chops it straight off so that that is recessed above so that when you look at it, you don't see that light fixture hanging down.
That's not one of the trees that has to be removed or being asked to be removed, is it? That's taller than the light pole?
No, the, if you refer to the plan I have here, the trees to be removed are these with the X's right around the perimeter of the building.
Well, that's for construction, right?
Yes.
But John Linton said that there are some trees to the north side of the property.
Oh, right, yeah, there's some, there's some stuff he mentioned in this area, this is the north side, and that's part of the request for an enhanced landscaping plan because as the old and damaged and dead and invasive stuff is removed, new good stuff is put in to refresh that buffer.
When you talk about invasive, you're talking about a tree of heaven, and that's the spotted lanternflies?
It is, yes, they're preferred, yes.
Food source of choice.
Any other questions for this witness? Any questions from the public for this witness? Seeing none, Mr. Weber, you have anything on the conclusion?
Just to go over proposed conditions, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
The condition was from the first hearing, having an updated landscape plan that would be made to the approval of John Linton, that the stormwater would be enhanced consistent with the report of Marie Raffa, since there was an opportunity to improve the stormwater management, and that also goes to the issue with regard to lot coverage. So, that, is that an opportunity now? Even though it's not required, the applicant has agreed to attend to that. With regard to the light pole, the board would either approve that as a variance, or if they're going to keep it as a pre-existing non-conforming structure, then it would be subject to compliance when it's installed. Those are the only two conditions that came to my mind with regard to this application.
Zach, do we have any other conditions?
Just the basic of compliance with the Board Engineers memorandum, revised stormwater management, and then the enhanced landscaping plan, that's what I got.
I also remember that the HPC wanted to assure that the construction would be consistent with design guidelines, so that the materials are appropriate and the representations been made, that the plan that has been prepared by the architect, I'm going to wake up, there we go. When we look at the style, we look at the color, that has to be a representation that would be included in the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Weber.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one more question?
Of course.
And maybe you guys don't know the answer to this. Are there any plans for the property to the east, to the west of this one? I know it's a vacant occupancy now, it's also zoned for office use. Do you know if there's any...
I don't think it is vacant, I think it's being used by...
It's a dentist office.
By a dentist.
Do I think it's in the same building?
It's a yellow building?
Yeah.
It's a little house, yeah.
I think it's a dentist.
I could have sworn, when I drove through the parking lot, I could have sworn it was not occupied. Okay, I take it back then, I apologize. That's General Walde, I think, owns it, yeah.
There's generally two or three cars there on the station.
Okay, I could have sworn it was vacant. Cape Cod look-ish thing, right? Yeah. Sorry.
Any comments from the public seeing none? Zach, can you tell us how many votes we need for this?
Because of the devariances, we're going to need five votes.
Five affirmative.
Five affirmative.
Five affirmative votes, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, we've heard the conditions, we know the number of votes, with that, let's go into executive session. Who would like to begin? Allison?
Well, when I first heard this application, my, one issue was that it was an historic house that was being knocked down, and why couldn't they save the historic house? The testimony today really helped me understand, I mean, because half those pictures could be from any old house, but the fact that there's really nothing left historical with the structure was really what sold me on that, okay, that makes sense, isn't just, we're just talking about a shell. I have a problem with the parking. We don't know, like, you know, we're looking, we can't just look at what's going to happen for this tenant, you have to look down, you know, downline in the future, and there's no reason to say that this could be, become another office building for a commercial use and, even if it's another Realtor, they, maybe people are going to be in the office bar. I just think the underpark aspect of it is bothering me, and I think that the property, the building should have been made, you know, reduced in square footage to conform to the parking, so I can't support this application for that reason.
Thank you. Mr. Carr?
Yeah, I think, couple things, I think the positive criteria outweigh the negative criteria. I think if they were going to put substantial investment into trying to save the existing property, the parking issue would still be an issue to some extent. I'm not sure what the requirement would be with the existing, but it feels like it would be more than fifteen. And I'm not sure if that was made clear or not, but, so, you know, considering the structural, the failing structural condition that they will rebuild it or need to rebuild it, and the benefits to public health and safety, ADA compliant, I think there's, you know, for having a business that's in town, stay in town, you know, I can definitely support this.
Tom?
Yeah, this is a very tough, tough one for me. I mean, I came in, normally when I see an application that's a teardown, I, my first response is, "Why are you asking for any variances?" I mean, that seems like a perfect situation to build everything in compliance. I had the concerns about the teardown as well, but based on the structural report, you know, I see the, I see no reason to be worried about preserving that building. It's a very attractive design, it would maintain the residential character, and it's certainly an improvement of what's there, it's consistent with this very small ORC-1 zone that we have. You know, and I, and I think the, you know, the FAR, a lot of the FAR variance is driven by counting the basement, which I know we have to count, but, you know, it's, and the proposed use, I guess, could change in the future, but it's right now, the way they're proposing it, it's not really going to be active office space, but we have to count it, so the FAR variance is there. count it, so the FAR variance is there. I accept the plan's argument that the property can support the FAR, I don't see any adverse impact on, on traffic or the neighborhood. I have major concerns about the parking, you know, I share those concerns, I accept that the current use doesn't need it, the current use might not even need the seven you have now, you know, behind, behind your building, or whatever, whatever the number is back there, I've parked there a few times, it's pretty much always empty. But, you know, I, for me, the, all the other positive aspects outweigh that concern, I wish we didn't have to address the parking, but the positive aspects for me outweigh it, so I, I think I will support this application.
Thank you, Tom. Mr. Nelson?
I have the same concerns, parking is a, is a, is a concern for me, you know, we've been dealing with parking in Summit forever, and while it's not this, this project's responsibility to solve it, they shouldn't contribute to the problems moving forward. However, you know, I, I understand, this is a great-looking building, I wish it was, back to, to Mr. Yuko's comments about it's a blank slate, and I've been saying this all night, you could build to what's required there, you know, what the minimum is there, as opposed to trying to stretch it out. I get the use, I get the idea, parking has me struggling, but I think overall, it's, it's an improvement over what's there, it is kind of that buffer zone between residential and commercial, so to speak, or the transition zone. So, in lieu of my concern for the parking, I can support this project moving forward.
Mr. Chanjuli, any comments?
I mean, I, you know, I have some concerns about the parking also, but again, Mr. Nelson said it, it's a vast improvement from what's there now, and there, it, it's not the only property on that street that has this type of use, and, but aside from the parking, I could support it.
Thank you. Ms. Nelson?
Yeah, I think, I, I agree that the, you know, what's there now, this is a much more aesthetically appealing building, I also appreciated the architect telling us about really, that there is no detail, as Ms. Chievo said, the pictures are, you know, they don't really tell that story, that, that there's a lolly column that's rusted, doesn't tell you that there's nothing left of the original structure in the way that Mr. Bejak did, but I think that, I think I would like to see those light poles be compliant, I think that with everything that's happening here, I'd like to see some kind of compromise there to, to bring that into compliance. I'm a little torn about the parking, I'm wondering whether, if they could have more, multiple EV spaces, is, did you get credit for more than one, or do you just get one space credit?
You get up to, no more than ten percent of the total required.
So, two, two, could have two.
Which, count as four.
Which, right, which would maybe just make it seem like a little bit less of it, I mean, I, I, it's not sixteen spaces, no matter what, which I, the math doesn't add up, I, that bothers me, but as you said, that is a state rule, I'm, I'm just wondering if there's any kind of compromise that could be, you know, achieved to help bring that parking a little closer to compliance.
Certainly, the applicant could add another EV-ready space.
Mr. Code, would another EV space contribute to the parking problem or help the parking problem? How many people have EVs?
Anyone could park in it, it would be reserved for EV, but anyone would be able to use it.
Okay.
And remember, too, when we're looking about the, the parking and whatnot, there is an ADA compliant parking space as well, which takes up additional space, but yes, anyone would be able to use it, so, but we could make an EV, an additional EV-ready.
Mr. Neering?
I have a concern about the parking as well, and also the lighting, I don't know why you wouldn't put in the compliant light poles when you're tearing the whole place apart. To me, that seems, it's working, no one's complained about it, how do we know no one's complained about it? I have no problem.
Then the applicant...
If you're going to leave another light pole low someplace on the property because you're going with fifteen, eight, so you don't have the coverage of the parking lot, so there's going to be...
More, like, more poles?
One more pole that would probably be necessary.
You should probably go on some mic.
I would ask that the applicant respond to the observations of the Vice Chair, Mr. Neering, and the other board members.
If you take the pole down that's been there for fifty years, from fifteen feet down to eight, you're going to need a second pole because you won't have the coverage of the lot that, that exists now, so you'd probably have to put one where the, where the fifteen-foot pole is now, behind the receptacle, and then probably put one on the other side of the lot, so you'd have a second pole that would have to be there.
I know it's an additional expense, but I think it's, with all the other money you're throwing in place.
That makes me feel better.
Would the board like to see this changed?
Is this, is this one to two? It's not like one to many?
One to how many?
It would, I, I think it would only be two, and we have two spotlights generally on each corner of the building, that's just on a sensor if somebody walks in or walks out, so...
I think, could the condition be however many are required, but, based on, you know, the calculations for the parking lot?
We'll work with the town. Yep, all right, so we'll...
Now, I'm hearing from Mr. Holzman, he's saying you're probably need three, and because you have the right-of-way cutting through the driveway, so in order to illuminate the driveway, you have to illuminate over the property line, so there would create technically a variance associated with that spillage. So, in other words...
The Westley...
On the west of it.
The Westley property.
So, in other words, because, I've already taken it off, you have the carriage road to the west of the property, and so you have a property line that goes down the middle, and so you have to illuminate the entire driveway, you can't just illuminate half of it, so you have to illuminate, and because you have the property line, you're going to spill.
Are there other ways to illuminate the driveway? Can you do light bollards or something that's, you know...
Off the building.
So, you don't need poles.
I couldn't get tested, I'm sorry.
That was Mr. Holzman, he said that you would need poles, the bollards would... Go ahead, Mr. Holzman.
Uh.
Please stand up. I would ask Rudy Holzman, who's been previously sworn as the civil engineer on this project, respond to the question with regard to the light poles.
Yeah, I recommend light poles for sight lighting, I, the bollards would probably provide more, just, just a number of them, I think, would provide more spillage and not be required, I, I would suggest the poles, poles mounted, lighting mounted on poles is the way to go.
So, would that open a can of worms now with the visual light from off-site?
No.
Now where the poles are placed?
Well, I think we need a condition, we need a condition that is reviewed and approved and...
Yes.
So, these could be in the landscape bed in the back?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so we're adding compliance with current standards for the light poles as a condition.
The board should retain jurisdiction, if I can, I, I don't mean to say that, but I mean to say with the board, consider retaining jurisdiction over landscaping and lighting. That would be two years.
Yes.
Would be my recommendation.
And just to be clear, so we're saying three light poles that are conforming in terms of height, is that what we're saying?
Correct.
Yep.
And recognize that there's going to be spillage, so we can ask for an anticipatory, I don't often get to use anticipatory variance for spillage of a nominal degree.
On the Westley property.
On the Westley property.
Okay.
Wait, I have a concern, so when this application went out, and they still had to do the two-hundred-fifty, you know, so the property to the west was, was notified of this, now we're changing it, and we're adding these light poles, that, the owner, the owner of the property might have not had a problem with the way the application was written, now we're adding something that would affect that property, and they're not able to speak up, so I'm, I'm a little concerned about.
So, either we have that condition, or we go back to approving the existing non-conforming light pole as a, as a variance.
Well, there's a little bit more if I can, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The notice that was provided, thank you, Ms. Chievo, the notice that was provided indicates that the plan can be amended at any time, even during the course of the hearing. So, to the extent that you have somebody who's interested in the application, when they read the notice, it says it can be amended, so, and that includes during the course of the hearing, and we did have neighbors here the first night, so we did have people, and Samantha Alfonso spoke with them and assuaged their concerns, so they were, they were fine with that, so everyone's...
Any other concerns about lighting?
None. It was about the carriage road, they wanted their carriage road, don't touch the carriage road, and then there was another property owner down the way who just had a general question about what was being proposed.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would assume the owner of the property to the west would have to be notified of construction taking place on their property, now, isn't that, wouldn't the light, is the light going to be on their property outside, or no?
When you see the...
I mean, is it proposed light, do you know, even know yet?
The, certainly, what's there now, he's, I think that there's some very powerful spotlights already illuminating, so I'm sure he'll be welcome to see it reduced in a, an appropriate residential setting.
I mean, I, I would just add that, I, I know the property to the west because it's my dentist, and there's nobody, nobody lives in the house.
Yes.
He's just there during the day.
Just an office.
There's nobody in the house.
Okay. Any other comments? So, I really appreciate the applicant's efforts in trying to illuminate the board to their intentions and their willingness to work with the board and their concerns. I do believe that this is an appropriate, not reconstruction, but change to the architectural style of this building, and I, I understand everyone's concerns about the parking, but let's keep in mind that they do face a penalty of roughly five hundred square feet towards the back of their property that they cannot park on, and that's obviously eating into their ability to meet with the ordinance, and I am sympathetic to that impediment, and so I really believe that they've showed constraints, I know everyone asked maybe reduce the size of the building, but they actually could have built a bigger footprint because they're under for max building coverage, so to that end, I think they, they were trying to maximize the program, but still stay under in terms of the mass and the size of the building that they could have built. So, I think overall, this is going to be a positive contribution to the neighborhood that's surrounded by very large buildings, especially across the street and to the east, and obviously, it's well-designed and in architectural character, keeping with the spirit of the DRO. So, with all that, I can certainly support this application, and I would ask for a motion to approve.
A move to approve?
Second.
Should, we just go, can we just go over the conditions one more time, as, I just want to make sure we're all knowing what they are, because we added some things.
Zach, can you just reiterate the conditions for us?
We have the design standards, that'll comply with the ORC one zone, the enhanced landscape plan will be provided for the approval of John Linton, and related to that, the board will maintain jurisdiction over the landscaping and lighting for the next two years, the applicant assured, assured us that the, sorry, that along, along with the HPC, HPC's desire, the construction would be within the design guidelines, and the applicant will add an additional EV parking space additionally from the plans that provided. EV-ready, I'm sorry.
And the light poles, right?
Yes, and then, along with the, the light poles, replacement of the current light pole with three light poles that will comply with the current requirements.
And the engineers...
In the standard condition of compliance with the engineers' report.
And there was also stormwater enhancements.
And the stormwater, yes.
Thank you, Zach. All right, so we got a second, is that right?
A second, yep.
All right. Nicole, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kieran?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Yuko?
Yes.
Ms. Zahn?
Yes.
Ms. Chievo?
No.
Mr. Chanjuli?
Yes.
Mr. Neering?
Yes.
Chairman Leigas?
Yes.
Thank you, Karen.
Good luck. Appreciate it. So, we don't have any...
Can, I just, I don't know if it matters, I think we had one extra vote there, I think we called eight people to vote.
Yeah. Oh, all right. Mr. Neering got...
He followed, so.
You didn't call him?
He called us. Yeah, we need seven.
We need seven. Yeah, so...
No, five, we need five, but we have eight people.
Seven to vote, seven are allowed to vote.
Five affirmative votes.
Yes, and up to seven can vote, so I think we have...
We have more than enough.
Yes, so we have a buffer. Just in case. Excellent, all right, board, we don't have any resolutions or minutes for memorialization, so can I get a motion to adjourn? Yes. So moved.
Second.
All right, good night. Night.
Good night.